Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of October 10th, 2018. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being broadcast live, it's also being recorded for use at another time if it needs to be, so keep that in mind, please. I'd ask you all, please, join me in a moment of silence. Also, would you join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you all for coming, it's nice to see some people in the gallery this evening. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. An entertaining motion to accept the minutes of September 19th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Our student advisor is out on assignment tomorrow, she'll be with us for the next meeting, so she can double up with whatever she has for her advisory report. Jeff, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. So we have in the gallery today a couple of special students. Each year, the Mass Association of School Superintendents gives us a couple of awards to recognize the two top academic students at the high school in the graduating class of 2019. In your packet, you have the resumes of both of our two top students. If you look through them, you should be pretty impressed, they're probably better than some of ours, I know they're better than mine. So congratulations to our award winners, and we have certificates for them, and we're going to do a little bit of a photography moment, photo op, I should say, so I'd like to present the awards to Dorothy Demascio Donahue and Caitlin Malito. to be their principal for the past three years. They're both remarkable, it's not just in the classroom that they excel, it's all over the place. They are true Panthers, through and through, in student government, student activities, they study hard, they're just good citizens, and I think we should all be proud of when they graduate this year, sending them off as graduates of Whitman Hansen Regional High School. So I'd like to offer congratulations to them and their folks, because as I always say, it's the people behind the scenes that support, and I always give a shout out to parents and grandparents and all the family that's here to support them. So thank you so much, and congratulations, ladies. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. As you know, at the last school committee meeting, you gave me the opportunity, we changed our job description from Assistant Superintendent of Student Services to Director of Student Services, and we've appointed, or I've appointed, an interim Director of Student Services, someone who might be familiar to you folks, who's been an employee here for four years, Ms. Lauren Matheson, if you come to the podium, please, she is our new interim Director of Student Services.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight.
Any questions from the committee, to Lauren, if you want to give a little bit about who you are and what the plans are for the future?
Sure. Again, my name is Lauren Matheson, this is the start of my 18th year working in education. I started off as a school psychologist, and I've been here at Whitman Hansen, working at the high school as the Special Education Coordinator, this is the start of my fifth year here. I've worked closely with Jeff and high school staff over the last four years to really, I think, bring inclusion to life here at the high school, and to develop a solid program where teachers are dual-certified in their content area in special education, and we're including a lot of students in the general population and giving them a really great education. We've also started new programs, because my background is school psychology, social and emotional health and learning is a big area of focus for me, so I'm really proud of our Bright program here, I don't know if you've heard of it, but we do have a program to help students who have been out on psychiatric hospitalizations or concussions, medical needs that keep them out of school, and so now we have a program that helps transition them back, we provide them academic support and clinical support, so that has been fantastic to see get up and off the ground, I think we're starting our fourth year with that. And we also have a social-emotional program here at the high school, where we provide small therapeutic classrooms right here on the first floor, with, from ninth grade to 12th grade, providing access to their education with teachers also that are dual-certified, and also work with students who suffer from mental health issues. So we've built a lot of programs and done a lot of good things at the high school, and now I'm excited at the prospect of learning what we have at the rest of the district. I've spent the last week, I think I'm on day six of the job, so I've spent the last week visiting all the other schools, meeting the principals, assistant principals, and just understanding where programs have moved around, so just kind of figuring out where things have landed, and look forward to working with all of the people in the district.
Questions for Lauren at all?
Thank you, Lauren, does anyone have any question? Mr. Boyce?
Hi, Steve Boyce, I represent Whitman Hansen at the Plymouth Area Collaborative, so thank you very much, welcome to your new position and everything. There's a lot that goes on with that organization, even though one third comes from member towns, which there are nine of us, and two-thirds of that population comes from out of district, but I think one of the big things, and I also was part of the North River Collaborative before we turned it over to the superintendents, I spent a year there, and this is my third year, on the Plymouth Area Collaborative. I follow in the footsteps of someone who was a chairman of one of those two collaboratives, in fact, she had a child of her own that had needs and so forth, but I just feel so strongly about it, and more than happy to work with you and any information I can share back and forth, I do have a report for tonight, I know they'll try to turn me off like the TV because it's at the end of the meeting, but that's okay, I can accept that. But, you know, I can always refer any information or find out any facts, I know there's also an operations part, which is the special needs folks from the school districts that meet, that's separate from us as the board, and actually, we're also the Board of Trustees as well as the Board of Directors.
Yeah, I look forward to working a part of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, South Shore Collaborative, North River Collaborative, they've all just invited me to their email chain, so I'm starting to get connected with a lot of people on those listservs, and we'll be working closely with them, too.
Well, thank you, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you. Lauren, welcome aboard.
Actually, one more.
Thank you.
Fred's got a question.
No, more of a comment than a question, had the opportunity to attend a meeting earlier, they'll be reporting on it in more depth, but it appears that there is going to be more state money for social and emotional, I know it's in the FY19 budget, there was something in the FY18 supplemental, which we're still hoping to get money, and I don't know how you spend money from '18, but we'll figure it out. Keep your eyes open for any grants, because they're going to be grant-based, and there is going to be some money there, it's not going to be a ton of money, but the state is looking at it, or at least out of DESI.
That's great news.
That might be some resources.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
Moving right along, I wasn't able to attend the Hanson Town meeting, I was at, actually, a meeting on budget in Whitman that night, Mr. Hayes went to the Hanson Town meeting, and I'm happy to approve, to report that Hanson voted an appropriation of $28,126 for the ramp on the bleachers for handicap accessibility, the estimated cost total was $70,000, so Hanson's percentage of 40.18% was approved at town meeting, and the good folks of Hanson also voted to approve the regional agreement on October 1st. That will go now to town meeting in Whitman, and hopefully, the voters in Whitman will approve our regional agreement, that both selectmen have approved, and we will have a solid regional agreement by the end of June 2019. Anything else at town meeting, Bob?
No, those were the only two articles, and they're really, there was a couple of questions on the regional agreement, and we discussed it, and they voted it in the affirmative, so we're good with both of those things.
I know Mr. McHugh is in the building, too, I don't know if he's back there, I don't know, Bob, if you want to go out of order, I know Mike has to get out of there.
Yeah, if, for the sake of time, the town administrator is here, and Mr. Hickey is here, too, I see him sulking down, I can see him, from the Board of Selectmen, and we're going to just jump around a little bit and get them in and out of here, so an entertaining motion to vote to ratify the collective bargaining units here, administrative assistants.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? You have copies in your packet, if there's any, anything, any questions? Mr. McHugh, will you be voting also?
Yeah, well, actually...
Please come up.
I would like to make a quick comment.
Do you have anything before we move to the vote?
I did know, when I reviewed both the MOAs, a provision in that, in which going forward, both unions would not allow, or they would, you know, will not allow, going forward, any new employees joining the Legacy Plan, which is a savings, obviously, for the school department, and obviously, what we need to fund out of our budget, so I'm very happy that both sides have agreed to that, and I'm actually going to try to pick up on that going forward in my negotiations with my unions, so I appreciate you, you know, blazing that trail, so that's my only comment, everything else looks great, that looked extra great, so.
Any, Fred?
Just, and that's also applicable to Unit A as well, the teachers, but in addition, in listening to the good folks at Mayflower, the people that administrate our healthcare program, a program such as the Legacy, don't know when, but one of these days, it's just not going to be available.
They very well may, yeah.
Yeah, because it's just, like, as you say, it's just not affordable.
Yeah.
So, but we tried to take baby steps as well, we appreciate the unions working with us.
On my side, I appreciate that.
Beth, before we vote, do you have anything to add or subtract?
No, I'm just really happy to be here, I've got one left, so I'll be glad when that is done.
Okay.
But, you know, I think it went very well, they seem to be very pleased, speaking to both of them, the employees seem to be very good about it.
Anything else before we move to the vote? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Hold on, I'm abstaining, I'm abstaining.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
It's eight, one abstention?
Yeah, just for the perceived conflict issues.
Okay, fine, thank you. Beth, you want to sign these, and we'll get them over with?
So you get them jointly?
You want to do D?
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to do, I'm going to do D, too. An entertaining motion.
Is it mine, or is it mine? So I can grab it from the left or... Well, I'll sign now, I think it's mine.
Whitman Hansen Education Association. I mean, if you want to wait, that's fine, if not, I'm okay with it. An entertaining motion to...
And they're also going to have the...
Approve the ratification vote on the collective bargaining unit D paraprofessionals.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstaining. Okay, thank you, this is C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for taking that out of order.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, do you want to do the energy reduction while you're here, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss with that? We're just going to make, take a vote to accept the energy reduction plan for the town of Hanson, so we're all on the same page.
It's pretty boilerplate, I would appreciate you voting, it obviously will further our attempts to become a green community. I, my understanding was you had reviewed it and were fairly comfortable with it, again, it's pretty straightforward.
Make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Yeah, the motion is to accept the energy reduction plan as presented in the new packet. I have a second discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
No, good.
Happy to stay.
Mike, nobody's happy to stay.
No, no.
Thank you.
Take care. Have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to superintendent.
Excellent, so in your packet, you will have my goals for this year, one of my goals for my goals was to keep it relatively simple, with reaching out to make sure that we have some improvement within the district, but still, with the understanding is, I'm learning the job as we go through it, and I felt like putting survival this year wasn't appropriate for the committee, so we put things together, some things that Ruth has left as far as legacy, and I've trimmed them down, the wording of that, so I think they're manageable and user-friendly. So my first goal is in student learning, and it's to monitor, evaluate, and support Pillar Two in the District Plan for Success, which is our strategic plan, a cohesive pre-K to 12 system of teaching and learning, that's our pillar two, and really, the focus this year is going to be to support the math program that we're piloting in the elementary schools, and determine which one we will move to purchase and adapt for the district, support the ELA team in determining which ELA program we will pilot next year, 2021, expand our special education programming to ensure the quality in district programs for all of our students, hitting on that one right there, after discussing some things with Lauren and looking at our current fiscal special education spending, if we look and invest in our own district, we might have some cost savings in special education by keeping kids in district and not pushing them out of district, we have a tremendous opportunity to do that with the leadership in place now. I'll do that attending elementary curriculum meetings with our curriculum directors and our principals, both at the elementary and secondary level, one of the pieces is we're going to evaluate the curriculum leadership model K to 12, as you know, we've had the current model for three years, and it's come time to evaluate how we do our curriculum coordination, I want to expand the role of elementary teacher leaders, part of my charge as superintendent is to give leadership opportunities to all our teachers and who wants to jump in and try, and evaluate our student data to improve student achievement. This year, DESI in particular is giving us a tremendous amount of information that we can use to really pare down and really flesh out what we need to do for our kids, George is headlining and moving forward with the data collection right now, and every day he's coming up with something new, hey, I found this, this is, this is where we're doing really well, this is an area that we need to improve on. My accomplishments in Goal One, if we do, if I complete them, will be our math pilot adoption, an English pilot recommendation, design program for our neediest kids, and a new leadership model, or continuation of our leadership model. Number two, I think this is important, I heard this loud and clear during the interview process, Goal Two is to be visible throughout the district to support our teacher staffs and students, I will be in district, I already have on my calendar time during the course of the week that it's dedicated to district time that I'm out and about, both scheduled and unscheduled time, coordinated time for conversations with staff, sometimes walk-and-talk conversations, get the most bang for your buck, walk in the hall, you see different things and talk to different people, I have a superintendent's council of students, however, they blew me off on my first meeting, so that was unsuccessful, we'll try again next month, and casual conversations with staff during their lunches and their hall duty time, their prep time, to find out really what's going on, and then facilities walkthroughs with Ernie and the other facilities guys, to see the state of our facility, so I can report back that when we need something, I've seen it, and this is what we need to do. My resources are really, it's time, and it's a tremendous amount of time, but I think it's well-used time, and if we, if I can accomplish that, I'll get a real understanding of the culture of our district, and be able to move us forward both financially and with parents and students, facility and capital issues, so that when we really need it, we really need it, and I can vouch for that, and then ideas from teachers, and even through conversations now, people are coming up with new ideas to do different things that we're formulating in the central office, so the, I want to say, the rank-and-file, or the boots-on-the-ground folks are telling us really what they need, and I can report that to school committee. Goal number three is...
Jeff, do you want questions, you want to get...
I want to get them all, I'll get it all out, and then shoot them out, if that's okay.
Yep.
Three is to improve and create open lines of communication in conjunction with Pillar Three, safety and security, right now, I'll be doing that through my entry plan, conversations, ALIS training for staff, which is secured for October 19th, and that means all staff, paras as well, as teachers, something we haven't done in the past is grade-level safety training for students, we're looking at an emergency communications application for our phones internally and externally, parent meetings related to security, both proactive and reactive, use of social media, school messenger, new TV show that I want to call Supes Corner, that I'll be doing either quarterly or a little bit more than that, a monthly cable show with the school committee chair, updates on issues within the district just as they come out, either through social media or through our communications app, and designate emergency and non-emergency communications personnel, which we've achieved so far this year. I think that will streamline communication of all kinds of parents, and that will foster less rumors and create more concrete information being circulated within the communities. And then four, and this is, I was trying to work a budget goal into this, and the best way I could do it is develop a workable budget that will deliver services and create opportunities so Whitman Hansen students are prepared for higher education, the workforce, and military service, something I've always said as a high school principal, and now I have the opportunity to talk about it district-wide, we want to prepare our kids to be good citizens. Strategies for that will be attending meetings, which I've already started to do with the town of Whitman, town officials and community members, use of radar to align our budget to our strategic plan, I will constantly advocate for the appropriate reimbursements from the state, both at the local and at the state level, engaging all stakeholders in the district budget, that means an outreach to parents and community members, not just parents, but all taxpayers, assess schools for capital improvements, and then assess schools for safety and security. If I do the job that I'm asking, or I'm proposing I can do, is we'll complete negotiations for Unit B, we'll have a budget of 2020 aligned with the, prioritized with the pillars for success, we'll have our short, long-term goals, a financial plan for funding, elementary councils, which, as Mr. Small mentioned a little bit, then it might be in the state budget already, academic support programs, one area that is growing rapidly is our ELL population, we have 46 students in district that are, that need ELL services, last year, the town of Hanson had one, we're up to 12 this year, so it's a growing population without much funding coming in from the state, growing our special education programs, enhancing foreign language and related arts, all throughout the district, not just at the high school, increasing our professional development line and our instructional technology, and then I threw in free full-day, tuition-free kindergarten, that has been a goal for forever, but I think if we can start that conversation and look in how we can put it within a workable budget, it's part of the, part of the goal that I want to have this year. So I'm open to questions, comments.
An entertaining motion to accept the goals as presented, so moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion, questions?
Yeah, so a couple, couple thoughts, so one, just a general question, so how do you feel about this template overall?
I don't love it.
Okay.
I don't love it at all, but, and here's, I had, I had a different, I had a different template, and I was telling George today, I found Ruth's old template, and I thought this is what the committee has always gone to, ours is more of a, of a leadership, of facilities, a culture, and then professional culture, and then family engagement, it's kind of the teacher template and our administrative template that everybody else uses in the district, so this is a little bit of a challenging template for me.
So I recognize we have to start somewhere, and sometimes it's easier to start with what you have, but speaking strictly for myself, I think some of the challenges are, and trust me, goals, I spend enough time on them at the office, that it's, they're tough, but I think the challenge that I see looking at some of these is when we get to the end of the year and we reflect back on them, truly trying to understand and how we measure the success, so for example, you know, with some of these, a true understanding of the culture, absolutely, but how do you measure that, what, what's the gauge for us to determine, oh, you developed an understanding of the culture, or you didn't, so, and the template, I think, again, some of the things that are on the accomplishment sections almost read more like a broad strategic goal, and some of the strategies actually seem like more deliverables, so again, my perspective is I think we've got to start somewhere, if you said you loved it, I'd say, great, we can work with it, the fact that you're saying you don't love it, again, I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues think, but I would encourage you, maybe we start here, but at some point, we, maybe rework the template, not necessarily change the goals along the way.
Sure, understood, I'd be open to that.
Yeah, I, if I could just add, I will say this template was what most of the administrators used for the, for the last few years, we did change the template for the administrators already in our district to make it a little more streamlined, and in line with the template that the DESE puts out for all personnel, according to their certification, so I think, I think there is room, after we've talked, there is room to make it a little more streamlined and make it more measurable, so that we can all be on the same page.
It's funny, because we're, look very familiar, but this morning, just a quick, three-column, you know, chart, goals, measurement indicators, and what is the evidence of attainment, very simple, very easy way to understand and to be able, for us to measure at the end of the year.
Okay, I'm open to a new template, as we move forward through this, I mean, the goals are what I want to present to you, and how I present them, we can formulate any type of template you want.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question, overall, where this won't be a full year, how do you, how are we, how are we going to be gauging this? It's more like it's a nine-month term, because we have to have these by May, so it's not a full, complete year to actually...
No.
...review them correctly.
As I think Jeff started out with, we have to have a beginning and an ending, but it's going to take us a full 12 months to get through a cycle of where it is, and it's not going to, that's not going to bring us to May, you know, it's not going to bring us to the full year.
Maybe that's where the newer, more, better template sort of evolves into place, you know, maybe it's not like a last three months, I don't see it as that, but you're always looking to improve, and I know, you know, I said it from the start, Jeff and George are going to bring us in a, in a different direction, so as things evolve, I mean, even when we talk about it mid-year, maybe that's something, you know, we can go through, go through like a laundry list and say, hey, this did work, this didn't, or whatever, more than happy to support in any way.
To just continue on with that before we move to Fred, I think the superintendent and the assistant superintendent had made it very clear at the beginning of the year, if any of us want to meet independently with any one of them to suggest anything for change, this is, you know, they're more than happy to meet with any one of us together, or independently to discuss anything that you might see as a goal, so I think that's good that we have some input on it, on it, too. Fred?
I, myself personally, am not looking at this as a set and fast, hardened-stone report card, so to speak, I look at a relationship that everyone's always working together, you know, for the common good, it's nice to see goals, and I think it's important to set a goal, and I think it's more important to say how you're going to achieve the goal, and then how it can be measured, but as far as worrying about, you know, come next May when we fill out a document, you know, it's a work in progress, it's a living document, as far as I would interpret it.
I agree.
And I'm open to evaluation as we go throughout the course of the year, too, you know, as this group sees those...
You know, we can go through, go through like a laundry list and say, hey, this did work, this didn't, or whatever. More than happy to support in any way.
To just continue on with that before we move to Fred. I think the superintendent and the assistant superintendent had made it very clear at the beginning of the year, if any of us want to meet independently with any one of them to suggest anything for change, this is, you know, they're more than happy to meet with any one of us together, or independently to discuss anything that you might see as a goal, so I think that's good that we have some input on it, on it too. Fred?
I, myself personally, am not looking at this as a set and fast, hardened-stone report card, so to speak. I look at a relationship that everyone's always working together, you know, for the common good. It's nice to see goals, and I think it's important to set a goal, and I think it's more important to say how you're going to achieve the goal, and then how it can be measured. But as far as worrying about, you know, come next May when we fill out a document, you know, it's a work in progress. It's a living document, as far as I would interpret it.
I agree.
And I'm open to evaluation as we go throughout the course of the year, too. You know, as, as this group sees those one-on-one conversations, if you're seeing something and you, you see areas of improvement that are necessary right away, I'm open to that. I think, I don't want to wait till June to figure out that I have been doing something right for six, seven months.
Chris?
Again, just to kind of continue to carry the conversation forward, it's about just level-setting the expectation. So, you know, to Dan's comment, it's not about the time that you have, it's about what, what is mutually agreed on as the expectation to accomplish in that period. And so I think we want to be careful not to let you overextend of, you know, I'm going to put 35 bullets, and then at the end of the year, we're going to be like, okay, you know? Well, good job, you hit 32 out of 35. You know, so it's, I, I think it's just really about trying to get it a little bit more simple, make sure we're clear on the broad strategies, and here are some of the ways we're measuring, but it's just building that clarity of expectations, both initially and then, to your point, throughout the course of the year. It's not, this can't be, we look at it now, we put it away until mid-year, and then we take it out at the end of the year. It's not, it's not-
Well, Chris, and I think this probably was just about when you got on the school committee, there used to be a document that the state made us fill out for the superintendent, and it was about 50 questions, and about 43 of them were totally unanswerable. And we used to complain to them, please change the measuring stick so we can really determine where we're going to be. So they simplified that evaluation document, and it's still, if you look at it, it's way, it needs to be changed.
You know, we had, we had something similar to this, and we got rid of it three or four years ago, because it's like, it's kind of, some of it's redundant.
Yes, it is. Mr. Boyce?
I have one thing, Mr. Hayes. And Jeff, for all that I was saying with Lauren earlier about the PAC and so forth, you know, it's, as our student says, you all know and you all do, you know, my heart's with them. It doesn't mean that I'm looking out for every single other school district, but in a collaborative, you're working collaboratively and so forth. But what I want to kind of tandem on that is, where you highlighted about, you know, ensuring that we can do more, if we have the quality, we have the resources to do more within district, I'm, I'm totally for that. I mean, if we can do it in-house instead of paying out, because I think we are giving, part of my report, and I'll give it now, we are giving money back to the member districts to the tune of 25% of what we had over, and we haven't had that in a few years. So it's like, you know, some of them might not even be expecting it, they might have just taken it as a norm and so forth. But that's coming to us based on the $197,000 and change that we spent. That's a lot of money, you know, to go out to just one, the PAC, to one collaborative for us. I mean, I pour my heart and soul out to pay anyone, that, and I've seen it in the classroom as a volunteer, and I've mentioned that many times, but I'm just so happy to see that, you know, my heart is with us here, I do my work there, but certainly if we can do, whatever we can do within, within our district, that's awesome. That is totally awesome. So thank you for putting that.
Paul?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that if you're not comfortable with the format, I mean, the format can certainly be changed. I think as, as the evaluation goes, I, I agree that by, when this is due, it's pretty evident as to what has and hasn't been accomplished. And I know as far as goals go, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to reach them all. So whatsoever comfortable, as far as the template goes, is fine. And I like the idea of the, what you expect to accomplish, and I think that is what we can use for as far as the evaluation goes. So let's say under leadership goals, student learning, SMAC goal one, you have four outcomes that you wish to see at the end. I mean, if you had two of those, I think that would be terrific. If you did one of those, that would be terrific, considering it's your first year, and once that budget process starts, that takes up a lot of work. There are some ambitious ones, I think, weekly visits to buildings, time for comment, that can evaporate in about two seconds, so, but I like the accomplishments as to what you would see to come out of that. So, number one, I don't have a problem if you want to change the template. Number two, I'm not concerned about the timeframe that we need in order to do the evaluation. I also not crazy about the final evaluation of form we get either.
No.
I don't like that as well.
I don't either.
So obviously, there needs to be some, some kind of-
We change that.
Let's change that first.
Yeah.
Let's change that. Isn't that, isn't that, that's Desi, we can't-
Yeah, right. I understand that, but that's just as-
You can do what the state tells you.
I think it would also be-
Unfortunately.
You're going to do what the state- I think it would be helpful, to be honest with you, if we took a look at and showed you what it is all of our administrators and teachers have-
Radar.
That talks about long-range goals with benchmarks. There's always usually a meeting at the, at the 90-day mark that we have to check in, but then we have a far-ranging look. Some of these have a far-ranging look, I think we need to say, okay, within that, what's doable in the January timeframe, what's doable at the end of the year, and then we can list those accomplishments. And that would dovetail our umbrella with the rest of our district, what they're doing, whether they're in Unit A, whether they're an administrator in Unit B, or what have you. So I think we can definitely look at that, but accomplish the same things that Jeff wants.
Okay, anyone else before we move to the vote? I had a, a motion and a second to accept the document as, in your packet, and that superintendent just went over and discussed with us. Allos in favor? Yes, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Our district professional development plan, George is going to present on that, I think it's the first time we've had one in a while.
Yeah, this is the first one. Our district professional development plan for this coming year was completed before the year started. That is something that, to my recollection, hasn't happened when I was a principal here, so it's something that we wanted to do so that everybody can know what's taking place. There are eight opportunities, whether they're half-days for people to have professional development in this district, and that is teaching staff and also our power professionals. We've already had the first one. Our second one will be on October 19th, which is a half-day. These opportunities are for training and for visibility and for focus on many different topics. Topics to be discussed in professional development this year are, deal with social emotional learning, deal with the aspects of safety and security of buildings, deal with curriculum, deal with a knowledge or furthering knowledge of our LGBTQ community of students, and they deal with leadership. One of the things we're doing separately this year and differently this year is we provided, we're providing direct access and professional development for our assistant principals, for our curriculum coordinators, for our lead teachers, and for our central office directors. They're going to go to two sessions over six hours, and it's called Mindset Go Training. And this Mindset Go Training is the, it's an effective communication. I think what's taking place, as far as principals are concerned, as far as everyone is concerned, is that sometimes the higher you go up the ladder administratively, the less and less and less there is to develop yourself as a professional in your craft, unless you do it on your own. So we've made a commitment and we've made an effort to say, no, how do we take care of everyone in this district, no matter what point or no matter what job or role that you have? So again, our professional development is set for the year, there are eight opportunities, there are two additional sessions for our assistant principal, and there is also one session for our central office administrative assistance also, so that we can try to hit as many people as we can and grow them as adults and professionals.
Any questions for the assistant superintendent?
I like, I like the goal of the administrators, because sometimes when you get that position, you're sort of there.
Yeah.
But to have some classes or instruction as to maybe how to advance our parameters of things, which is-
Yeah, I think that's something that we need. We need to build capacity in every level that we have, and I think that's one of the things we're trying to do.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Beth?
I was going to say, the font and the tone is excellent, because that's been one of the complaints that we have, and still continue. True before Jeff and George about communication and how they're important, it's more, everybody understands how to communicate with each other, they're out there to cover how-
That's right. Well said.
Thank you.
It's true. Student data security. So a couple weeks ago, Chief Benton sent George and I an FBI update on student data breaches and pirates holding student data for ransom. So I asked Chad and Steve to put together a presentation for you folks to talk about how our data is secured and how comfortable we are, knowing that we have some fail safes and some firewalls. So if you guys can do your presentation, I'm pretty secure with what, what we have, but I want the committee and the public to know that your student data is secure here at Whitman Hansen.
Thank you, Jeff. So tonight, I just want to go over just an overview of the student data and some protections and things that we have in place to protect that data from anything of breaches and hacking and cyber attacks and things like that. So I just, I'll, just, I have a few points in here, and if there's any questions, feel free to jump in and, and ask them. So on our data security, all starts with the computers. So we were lucky enough, three years ago, to move forward with virtualization from the town meeting vote, which gives us, in addition to the virtualization itself, it actually gives us a lot of security from the standpoint of individual computers. With virtualization, all of our data is actually in our data center. None of the data actually resides on the individual devices. Similar to like, at your houses, all your data is actually loaded on your machines, and if you get a breach on your machine, it could cause havoc and go into the network and steal the data that's on your computer and on the network. With our virtualization, we have a lot of protections and the security, because everyone looks into the data center for all of their data, so the devices that they're actually on, there's really no data on it. So it allows us to get better security and protections for a lot of the data that we have in the district that staff use. In addition to that, we have quite a bit of antivirus protections. We have multiple layers of antivirus protections, not only on the, the thick PCs that we have in the administrative areas, but we also, in the virtualization area, there's deep scanning antivirus protections that look for anomalies in the files and things that run on the machine to disallow those types of things from running. So we have multiple protections on that aspect, which is one of the larger areas for cyber security breaches that are coming into district, anywhere that people use the computers. In addition to that, we, on this, on the computer level, we, we patch and update our systems on a regular basis. You know, at home, you see your Windows, if you have Microsoft, your Windows updates, and those are security patches that are protecting holes and vulnerabilities in your machines. We have an ongoing updated program where we update all those machines that need those security updates on a regular basis. We also update all the software that gets used in the district, that comes from third-party companies, you know, Adobe's and Microsoft's, that they send and patch and update to protect all the vulnerabilities and holes that they find as well. So we have a regular, ongoing basis for that. In the network level, we have a lot of protections, starting at the firewall, which is the endpoint for the network coming into our district. And our district is set up from, as a star network, where everything from outside the district comes into one point and fans out to all of our schools, through our private fiber network that we have. So we have a one-point entrance where we have our firewall, we have our protections for our firewall and intrusion protection and scanning for any vulnerabilities or anomalies of traffic, large amounts of traffic coming in, and as well as large amounts of traffic going out, which the firewall stops as well. Like if you get some sort of virus or something comes on your machine, something might send out a lot of the data, start sending requests out of the network to whoever it's, wherever it's coming from, and the firewall picks up on those things and kind of protects against those outgoing as well as incoming. Most people think it's protected from the outside coming in, but there's a lot of protections that you have for outgoing as well, for ports and people, different programs using different areas of the network that hackers and people that would try to use to get out and to send the information out, so. Network security, we also have network security on the, in the networking and the switches and the routers that we have, as well as the wireless. We're using a lot more wireless these days, so we have a lot more security, and that's been a lot, a large part of our focus, is protecting the wireless, where we have a lot, the Chromebooks and any devices people bringing in, that's a, a large part of our focus, to make sure that those are hardened and protected from people and things getting on our network to spread viruses or things like that. Email, that's a, we have a lot of things going on with that, because that is the primary, outside of the computer, the primary place where people can get data and breaches and hacked. You get emails with lots of funny things, looking for, you know, your long-lost cousin from Zimbabwe, you know, just won the lottery, click here to, you know, send a wire to him and, and he'll share, share his millions with you. Let, you know, unbeknownst to some people, once you click on that, it actually opens up a Trojan horse on your machine, on your machine, and starts locking down all your data. So we have a lot of things in place for anti-spam, antivirus on the email side of things, which is an ongoing fight, because as you probably know with your email, the spam that comes in is ever-changing and ever-clever, and it's an ongoing fight day-to-day with us as well. We get, it's, it's a fight where we work with the rules of the anti-spam to make them stronger or less stringent, because the more strong, the stronger we make it, the, the less mail comes to, the less spam comes to people, but also maybe you'll get some messages that should have come to you that are in your spam message now. So we're kind of trying to balance this fine line of staff notifying us, I'm getting spammed by a lot of things, we increase it, oh, now I'm not getting my message from, you know, one of my colleagues at a different school district or something, you know? So there's a fine line, and the spammers are getting really good at some of the stuff that they send, so. Users, from users' perspective, we have restricted accounts, where users have restricted rights, where they can't, when they log onto a computer or a virtualization, they can't just install things. So it kind of locks them down from, if they really did have something they brought on a USB stick or, and their email, they wouldn't be able to run on their machines anyways because of the restricted rights that they have. There's a lot of schools and organizations that give people administrative rights to install things on their machines, and that's kind of one of the big things that we prevent here because of those things where the people come in and you just, you know, you bring something from home and you think it's just a Word document and, that someone gave you, and you open it up and it kind of installs a lot of things on your computer and your network. So that's a, that's a pretty big protection right there that we utilize. And the restricted access on other areas of the network that people have is just for what they need. We have shared folders and things like that on our network, but people only get access to the things that they really need, which is not just to keep people from things, it's more to help in the protections, where if something happens and they did have some sort of virus, it can only hit the things that they have access to, maybe like their home directory and a few folders that we can easily recover for them. So, and then on the server side, where most of our data does reside, we take a lot of controls and perspective on that, where it is limited access to the physical servers that we have here, where it's in our office and within multiple doors is, there's security cameras. The access to actually get on the servers is restricted to just a few individuals. Regular staff don't have rights to connect to our servers and, and log into them, so we're kind of protecting on that end, so that even if someone's passwords got stolen or whatever, they couldn't even get in and log into our servers, which hold the majority of our student data and personnel data. We have backups, onsite and offsite, for any times you would have any issues with any things where we would need to recover things, whether it's servers or people's data, which we do on, on basis, we have those protected and backed up. And, and the servers are kind of going more away anyways as it is, so they're, they're going into the cloud, where you're getting protected on multiple perspectives, where the cloud companies are protecting them on multiple servers and multiple zones of the country and things like that, and with backups. So we're, we're in, also in the process of kind of migrating a lot of those off into those areas as well. So you have the dual protections and backups and different areas in case they got issues in certain places, so. That's a lot of the information that I have, if there's any questions I can answer.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Boyce?
Chad, thank you for all that. Do we use any cloud services for data and so forth, instead of just having servers on site? And what do we do for backup? Because I know we had a disastrous backup issue years ago with the email.
Yeah, so we do, we do utilize a lot of cloud-based applications. Yeah, so we do, we do utilize a lot of cloud-based applications. We have, let's see, we have a lot of, like our, our health software, our IEP software, library software, a lot of those we have as a means of putting them in the cloud because they're all web-based now, and instead of housing them here, you know, we, we, we cut down on the maintenance and the servers and the hardware and that aspect, and in the cloud, they have, they take care of a lot of the stuff, whether it's backups and all the hardware, we don't have to deal with any of that, all the updates. They have a lot of protections where they, you know, they give us forms of what protections they have, whether they're backups, or copying the data into multiple areas so that they're secure and safe.
Fred?
What are we doing to educate our students as to different risks that are out there, such as, you know, common ways someone might take an email, send you an email and fish?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a great question. That's, I think, where, with a lot of the things that are going on in society now with data breaches and everything you look at from, you know, Facebook and anywhere, or anything any people, anything any people touch nowadays, I think that's going to be one of our initiatives, is to go out and, and explain to people some of the, the top practices that you should be doing.
You don't have that in place now?
Well, we, we, we do have that with, we communicate a lot of that with our staff, and then in the staff, in their computer classes, they teach the kids like digital literacy and digital citizenship. They have a lot of those in those types of classes where they teach the kids, you know, on, you know, the passwords and only open emails that you know, and a lot of those types of things. And I think, from our perspective, I think we need to kind of push a lot of that more, push a lot of that data and informational things out there to people that maybe, they're not the obvious things that people know about, that, you know, that they should just be considering, you know, don't write down your passwords, you should change your passwords, you know, clicking on things, looking at, at different websites, you know, there's a lot of different things where saving your data in different places. So there's a lot of different initiatives, I think that's going to be one we're going to be trying to push out a little more to the staff and to the students.
If I could, there is a plan that has been going on, that's now been extended for the outreach to digital citizenship for students. We now have two people who are going to be Common Sense Media, in case you've heard of it, that they offer a certification in digital citizenship, but we also have the, one of the positions that we talked about at the very first school committee meeting, is a, is a educational liaison for technology in order to help some of our people in the library where students go to. So one of the plans for that is that there is a process of how to teach digital citizenship beginning in kindergarten. So that's been in place and that continues to evolve to be in place for our students. When it comes to educating the staff, that's where we rely more on the technology department, but when it comes to digital citizenship and educating the kids, we turn, we internalize that for the librarians, for the media center helpers, and then for our computer teachers at the various levels for kids. But that is ongoing.
So, so that position was just a stipend? It's an existing sta, it's not a new position? Just to clarify for folks out there, we didn't, we didn't hire somebody new just to do this?
Right.
It's a, it's a, it's a small stipend for somebody existing to make sure that we have this component in our, in our curriculum and getting down from the, from the kindergarten all the way up through the grade 12 level on how to keep your, your information safe.
Dan?
Do you encrypt the data that's in-house? The data for the student's data, is it encrypted at all? Sitting on the desk or in the cloud?
You talking like on the servers? Is it actually?
Servers and/or cloud. If information's out there and there's a breach.
Yeah, the, well, the.
It can't, it's not totally.
Yeah, well, the, the communication that, that's between, if, if we have it on, in the cloud, the communication is always an encrypted SSL communication path.
Not just the communication, I'm talking the data itself where it resides. Is it encrypted?
On the, from the.
Either a server side or.
From the cloud side, yeah.
Cloud somewhere. Wherever the data is stored.
Yep, yep, from the cloud side, yeah, they, I, we receive their privacy and security and encryption stuff that they have from the different cloud-based places that we house some of our data.
Mr. Boyce?
I'm so sorry. Couple things, Chad, user accounts, because obviously, you know, I'm not just talking like a, a class graduates, well, we know that, all those have to be inactivated. How do you maintain user accounts? Is there someone doing this like weekly, every other day or something? Because if someone leaves the district or whatever, you know, that's, an open account is just as bad as an open.
Yeah, we have, since, since there are so many, since there are so many kids that come in and, you know, if they withdraw or they leave at the end of the year, there's, it's quite a, quite a bit of, we have an automated process, so once we add them into our student system, computer accounts get created, generated for their computer accounts, for their email and things like that. And then on the, on the flip side, we have that same process going, so when we enddate them, we discontinue their accounts. When they are graduating classes, we kind of, once they leave, there's a, there's a certain threshold that we, I think like a month, we keep them and then we shut off the accounts and, and their email that is connected to them.
And one last question. Port security. Like say we took out the bank of desktop computers over there, those ports someone could plug into if it's still live. Do we have a way to kill those?
The, for the, for all ports that we have, or?
All ports, any ports that aren't being used, I'm sure there's more that, you know, data hubs than there's, than, than we actually need.
Correct, yeah, so what we, we only eleven up the ports that, that we have actually used right now.
Okay.
And all the ports that we have are kind of VLANed or sectioned off for what traffic is actually going to go to it, so it's, the protections are, the protections are there for that.
Great, I'll sleep better tonight, thanks.
Anyone else? Chris?
Quick question, because you guys peeked my curiosity. So this whole ransomware situation in financial services has been real and scary for quite some time. Are you aware of any districts that have actually been penetrated and attacked?
There was a district on the news, and I can't quote it.
It was, really, yeah.
A couple, it was last year, it was May, April of last year, I think, they, that's the, we had that conversation, is our student information safe?
Yep.
Because that's what they want, they want to hold that student information and not crash our network, but say, okay, I got, I got the Howard's, this is.
Give me, give me X Bitcoins and all.
Correct, right.
Well, I'm surprised, I guess I shouldn't be, but I'm surprised.
And that's why the FBI came out with this, and Chief sent it to us and said, hey, look, just a heads up that we're going to, the FBI's putting out this PSA that makes sure your, your data, your home data is safe, and these folks are looking at different areas to breach student accounts. And I think they're looking at, you know, mostly college/university, small college/university, and it's much harder when you're doing the private stuff in your, in your dorm room versus our contained, our self-contained classrooms. I think what Chad said, the virtualization, taking away a lot of the desktop computers, so you can't add something to that and crash the system or steal from the system, is, has been a good move for us. And after talking to them and seeing what we have with our, our contracted service providers, our data's not going to throw it out there to say, hey, try to hack us, but I think we're pretty safe. And nothing's 100%, but I think we're in a good spot.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, I mean, I think, and what those really want you to, want to do is they want to, they put that lock on it and they say, the only way you're going to get it back is if you give us X amount of Bitcoins, but the way that you kind of protect against that is, you know, like, our student data, if that got encrypted, there's, we have copies and backups so that we can tell them, no, we don't, we're not going to pay it because we have, like, our, our student system, the company that we have our student system from, they actually have our copies nightly, so that if something happened to our server, they would just spin up their server on their end so we can access our data and we shut our server off over here. So those are the types of things we kind of look at for like backup plans and, and things like that, so that if you did have those locks of those Bitcoins, you know, you, a lot of people are stuck in the mud because in the school district or the town that got that Bitcoin ransom, it's, a lot of them are, that they have open accounts or administrative rights to things, and then that's where it just runs rampant, so if you log in and you have rights to everything, it's just going to lock everything and then you're kind of screwed.
Fred?
I, I can say it happened to my grandson with a homework page and a Word file, so.
I think, I think you.
That was personal for him, but.
It happens to a lot more people than I think you, that you would think.
Well, knowing the gaming sites and the stuff he goes on, you know, I'm sure.
That's where the teaching has to happen, is that when you go on those sites and that stuff.
Yeah, but, just getting back to something, Dan said, because I didn't hear, hear the exact answer, our server itself is that encrypted?
So, I'm trying to figure out, what, what encryption, like the, the hard, like the hard drive encryption?
The hard drive encryption, it should, it should have to be encrypted, there should have to be an encryption key in order to access that data, you know, should you?
Well, it's, all the, the hard drive, the hard drives on the servers are all raided out, so if you take a hard drive out, it's not going to do you any good because it's raided about, amongst multiple drives, so that one drive isn't going to help you because you can't read it, even if you try plugging it in somewhere, that you'd be able to use it.
But what if you took all of them? In other words, the information, if I'm not mistaken, by law in Massachusetts, under the Privacy Act, has to be encrypted, because you have non-public-private information on there. I just want to make sure that they are encrypted. They probably are, and they're probably encrypted out of the box, but.
Yeah, with the, with the, with the drives themselves and the, the physical drive itself, it's a server drive, so it's, taking it out and putting it in yourself is not going to really do you any good, correct?
Anyone else? Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the last thing in my report, the Duval School parking issue. I brought to the committee's attention that we have an issue in the Duval School parking lot. Tabled that issue till the spring, it's not an emergent issue, and I know the town of Whitman is trying to put together some finances and to go to the Board of Selectmen or the town right now to look for $30,000 to solve a problem that I think we can Band-Aid for this particular instance, is worth it. It's not something I want to go forward with, however, there is an issue with the Duval parking that we're going to try to come up with a plan and potentially propose something in the spring for town meeting. George and I went over, walked it, looked at it, came up with a couple of Band-Aid approaches to the parking situation. That's where the goal of being visible and seeing the facility on its, for what it's worth, it's just something I'm tabling, but I know, I mentioned to get, to the committee that we were looking at some money for that, putting it off till the spring.
Dan?
Just once again, in case people didn't know, what happened at Duval to cause the overload of parking, besides the shutdown of McQuan?
Well, we moved program, we added staff. We added staff from, from the other part of the district, plus we also contracted, or we put North River folks into Duval, so we added more people for our program. And I think as we talk, again, goal-wise, and we look at program within the district, especially special education programs, we're going to be utilizing people all throughout the district and adding, you know, different programs into different buildings to make sure our kids are serviced correctly.
Fred?
So what we added to Duval were district-wide programs.
Correct.
For special needs. And how many?
Four.
Four programs went over. Four programs, which is roughly how many people?
Teaching staff?
Uh, somewhere between 16 and 20.
16 and 20, and then we also had classrooms, how many classrooms is North River using?
I believe they're using three.
Three, and we do garner some funds from that.
It's a rental.
It's a rental.
They rent from us.
Okay, do we have a lease or is it?
It's one year.
It's, okay, so it's.
It's, it's annual.
Annual? You know, because I'm just trying to think if we utilize the rent money that we're getting in order to make the improvements to correct the problem that's caused, that could be a win-win for everybody.
Correct, correct.
As far as that goes, instead of having to lay the burden on the taxpayer.
And that's why we're looking at what we can use and look for a solution in the spring as we go forward.
Okay, any other questions for the superintendent?
Thanks.
As we're moving forward to new business, I just would like to remind people of some dates. October 19th is early release, pre-K to 12 for Professional Development Day. November 2nd is early release, pre-K to 12 Grading Day. November 6th, no school, Election Day, but central offices will be open. November 12th, no school, it's Veterans Day, central offices closed. And November 14th is our next school committee meeting, 7 o'clock, right here in the library. Okay, acceptance of gifts, we don't have any gifts. McQuan School, as you know, we have closed, and we have taken a tremendous amount of surplus stuff from other buildings, and they would like, Ernie would like the permission to take everything that is not being used by any of the other departments and declare it a surplus, to have the odd sale and dispose of it. An entertainer motion to do so?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, great. Field trips, we have a ton of them. I'll do them one at a time. AP Language Class, November 29th is going to the Trinity Repertory Theater in Providence to see the production of Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol. They don't believe they'll be needing a school nurse, they're looking to waive it because there are people at the Repertory Theater. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Girls' Basketball is looking to go from the 28th to the 30th of December to Coogee Valley High School to play at a basketball tournament. 12 to 14 students, zero cost, they're going in the minivans, they will not be needing a nurse because they have people on-site. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Got a.
Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, where is the tournament? All it says is that they were taking vans, but it doesn't say what city it's in.
Who's Sack Valley High School?
Where is it though?
Where is that?
It's in the west side of the state.
Western Mass?
I'm looking right now to see. I believe it is in Western Mass.
Who's it? Western Mass. Western Mass.
Western Mass.
Probably the area.
Any other question?
No, not at all.
All those in favor? Next one is the Decker event, this is a yearly event, it's at the Quincy Marriott, it's District One Decker Conference. They require, they will not be needing a nurse as they have on-site staff. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Next one is a Decker event also, March 7th through the 9th, Marriott Copley Boston, Mass State Conference. Two chaperones, they will not be needing a school nurse as they have on-site coverage. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Show Choir is going to be going March 2nd to the Daniel Mann that Looks Like High School in Madison, Connecticut for Show Choir Festival. They will not be needing a nurse because they have on-site people. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Next one's January 12th, going, Whitman Hansen Ski Club is going to the Gunstock Ski Area in Guilford, New Hampshire. They will not be needing a nurse because they have emergency personnel on-site, should anything happen. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? I believe that's all of us, bless you. Okay, Michelle, you didn't have, I got them all, didn't I?
Yes, I think that's where all the costs break down.
Yeah, I'm going to do that. Field trips, okay, old business, Hansen's 200th Anniversary, which is going to be done in 2020. I know that the selectmen have been involved, I know that they have a committee, I know they've contacted the superintendent, they've contacted me to determine what they're going to do, which, it's pretty much a work in progress, because it's a couple of years away, but any events that are big as this one's going to be does take some planning, so they've been contacting everyone I know, if you'd like to add anything?
Yeah, so Laura Kement is working with our, our Computer Graphics Class with Chris Mar to design the 200th logo. So it's prioritized this fall so that they can roll it out and have that in place in plenty of time, so the students here are helping Laura, and Laura is acting as the client right now, so it's a really good piece to sell their, to create and sell their product to a client. So we'll roll that out, once that's solidified, we'll roll it out to the committee.
Any questions for the 200th for Hansen? Seeing none, okay, Subcommittee reports, warrant Subcommittee. Michelle, do you want us to vote these minutes?
Yes, please.
In your packet, there's minutes of the meeting of September 27th, 2018. An entertainer motion to accept?
So moved second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Unanimous, thank you. Next up, policy subcommittee?
Done.
Nothing to report, nothing's changed. Facilities and capital improvement?
We need to schedule a meeting. Uh, I don't know if we want to do it tonight or if we want to do it over the next few days.
I think, uh, one of the things, uh, Mr. Small had mentioned is, we could either do it before a school committee meeting, as we've done in the past, or we can pick an alternative date during the course of the school day or, or business day. Uh, we have a nice, uh, it's, it's an open meeting, we don't have to have it in the library. We have a, a central office, new meeting space upstairs, which would really hold a nice meeting.
Or, or we're at a school.
We're at a school, as, seeing the facility. So I'm open to setting a date, I'm pretty flexible. It's up to the, you folks. We can, we can pick a date and then, and have a meeting, but I.
Pick a school.
Do you want to continue to have it before the school committee meetings for the members that go to the facilities subcommittee meeting? It seemed to work pretty well that way. Fred?
Uh, I'm open as to what's easiest for people to be able to attend.
Yeah, it's easiest for me. You're a yes? I'm a yes. Who else is on the committee?
For school, that is good.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody wants to before school committee.
So now we'll do it next November.
The November meeting.
Fourteenth?
The fourteenth of November at six PM here in the library at the high school?
Yep.
Will be the facilities subcommittee meeting. Okay, legislative update, I believe that's Freddie and Mike.
I have nothing. I do, uh, there was a meeting this morning out in Marlboro, and Jeff Riley, the Commissioner of Education, was in attendance, and they had asked for, uh, input from school committee members, superintendents, business managers. Uh, I was able to attend, and, uh, in the, uh, get-to-know-use portion, where he pretty much just asked folks, what are your concerns, uh, regional transportation was, uh, right at the top. And where this was a, uh, meeting that was put on by the Mass Association of Regional School Committees, which we are a member of. It appears that the state feels that school regions should have, quote-unquote, skin in the game, uh, as to one of the reasons why they're not fully funding us. That they feel that otherwise we might just sign any sort of a bus contract and it wouldn't matter to us if we didn't have something at risk. Us in particular, you know, we bus our elementaries and the towns pay. In other parts of the state with other regions, it's all regional transportation. They have one central area, uh, there was one superintendent, his region encompasses about two-hundred-and-twenty-five miles. His kids are on a bus for an hour and twenty-five minutes or more, twice a day, every day. They're rural, they, you know, face some pretty big challenges. But, uh, we did get into a lively discussion about, uh, regional transportation and being fully funded. And I brought up the fact that the statute says that we'll be fully funded, subject to appropriation, and the definition of what it is to appropriate is really the question. You know, to me, and this is just me, appropriating doesn't mean you decide how much money to give, it's the act of giving the money. Uh, that's the mechanism of, of funding. So, uh, we're, uh, still in a waiting pattern, but as we all know, we received, I believe it was eighty percent reimbursement this year, which was up from the mid-sixties for FY nineteen. Uh, there was a supplemental for FY eighteen that, as we'd said earlier, is still stuck in ways and means. That, uh, would contain that same, pretty much eighty percent reimbursement that they bumped it up to. Uh, so that was a good thing. Uh, we talked about being able to sustain our budget, you know, where the state, uh, turns around and they provide roughly fifty percent of our revenue, but they grow at about a half a percent. Our towns are limited by Proposition Two and a Half plus new growth, so they're limited into what they can give us. But yet, if you look at how a school budget grows and, you know, the challenges that we face, uh, if we held to a two-and-a-half percent increase, we're still looking at double that from the towns. So we have our challenges and they are being heard, supposedly. Let's see, health insurance is on their radar. They realize that, uh, health insurance is a, uh, very large issue for all the school districts, you know, particularly for school regions. Uh, one of the things that I did verify, at least in Whitman, uh, when we put forth our budget in our increase, it does include the increase in health insurance. When a town department in Whitman presents their, uh, increase, and I can't speak specifically for police and fire, but, uh, it was thought that it did include that as, uh, did not include that as well, they're not including health insurance. They have a separate line item within Article Two for their health insurance increase. So, you know, as we all know, we've been hit with a half a million dollar increase in some years within our health insurance. So that's a pretty big chunk of a budget increase, right there. So just some of the disparities of how a school region works in comparison to a town, uh, school system, so to speak. Uh, other than that, uh, we're waiting on, uh, the holding pattern on that supplemental. The state is supposed to have to finalize their books by November first, so we should hopefully find out, uh, if we're going to actually see any of that money by then. And if so, there's money for safety and security, uh, through a grant program, uh, that would encompass some of the work that we've done for the entrances, perhaps if we can apply for that and be lucky enough to receive that money. There should be money for social and emotional, uh, through a grant process, as well as for FY nineteen, but we're still waiting to try and get those grants as well. That's where things sit legislatively, and, uh, please get out and vote next, uh, November.
Any questions for Mr. Small? Thanks, Fred. Pilgrim area, Mr. Boyce?
Yes, we had our, um, subcommittee meeting, our first one, um, for the budget. Myself, uh, the chair of our, of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, uh, the business manager, executive director, and our treasurer. Um, we voted last June in eight-and-a-half million dollar budget for FY nineteen. Um, the business manager actually worked some numbers based on the students that were coming in, based on, um, any new hires, um, other positions that we had, um, open or, um, not using. And she got that down to eight point two-three-six or two-six-three million. So we saved almost a quarter of a million. Um, we got, we were able to report that back at our first meeting, which we started with a trustees meeting on, uh, October fourth. And that was the first meeting of the fiscal year of the whole board of directors. Um, we did reorganize, we have the same three, uh, folks that represented us as chairman, vice-chair, and secretary. Um, and we also got into, um, talking about, and I think it might be coming in a letter here, but I'm not too sure, um, about the surplus and how we were taking twenty-five percent of that and distributing it to the nine-member towns. Now, it's not based on the hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand and change that we spent that I mentioned earlier, but I left the other sheet at home, I, I thought it was around, um, twelve thousand dollars for Whitman, Whitman-Hanson. So just wanted to bring that forward. And we did receive the annual audit, and the auditors came. That report I'll send to Michelle, and if you want it, I'm sure she'll be happy to distribute it to us. And that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Any questions? I was kind of hoping maybe, Steve, you brought us a check for the eleven?
I know, well, they weren't cutting checks that night.
No?
No, I don't know why. I almost took over as treasurer.
Then you'd brought, then we'd have got the check?
I probably would have gotten it, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, any questions for Mr. Boyce? Negotiation subcommittee, we met with Bee, which is the last one to do, and, uh, we've set a couple of dates and hopefully it'll be over within, uh, the next couple of meetings.